Maybe under announcements. Barbara, get your right behind you.
No, good, ground answers. Let's wait after me. Get the kids out.
All ready? I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting. We will also be acting as the Avalon Housing Authority for March 6th. If you would please... I'm sorry, I'm really sick. I don't know how long I'm gonna be able to sit up here. So I may be going back and forth, and then I'm gonna defer to O'Leary to run the meeting if I get a coffin jack. Anyway, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we really don't have an invocation other than I'm very thankful this is the first council meeting in a number of council meetings. We haven't had any of our local residents pass on, and there have been no mass murders. So it's great. Just be thankful we've had a good couple of weeks. Okay. And the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. And we have Coach Andrew Hobbs here today. Would you like to stand up and give a little talk about your girls?
Yes. City Council, city manager, and mayor, our wonderful guests, and our family members that may be here on behalf of our coaching staff at Avalon School and this incredible team. We are here to bring you into the celebration of the first ever Avalon Lady Lancers Soccer League Championship.
Yay!
They may be small, but they are mighty.
Yes, they are.
And I'll tell you what, at first glance, you think we've been poised to do this for a long time. We have maybe a $1,200 club league fee, or possibly parents that are willing to drop them off, or volunteer left and right, or they've had this multimillion dollar training staff that have been here and recruiting. But it actually started with a losing season last year. We were waiting on that gorgeous field to be built, and you did it, and you did it right. And on behalf of our team in the school, that field made all the difference in the world. It is beautiful. Our injuries are down. As a result, girls could practice when they wanted to. They could jump out there on the field during the weekends and get some extra training. We want to say thank you. You were a part of an incredible victorious season this year. And I have an amazing staff, one of which, our assistant coach here, our goalkeeping coach, Miguel Bonillas, here, also works for the city. And he's a good friend, came out of retirement this year to take a freshman who has never played soccer in her life and train her as a goalkeeper.
Wow.
Pretty unique. We also have four captains, if they could step forward for me. Five captains. I was hoping they'd all be here tonight, and they are. This is our senior this year graduating, Alexa Bravo. On my left, these three girls alone, with goals and assists combined, contributed 75 goals of our season this year, which is higher than any team in the history of our school. On top of that, this year, the most winning team in Avalon Girls Soccer history. And the young lady on the far left, Stephanie Martinez, has surpassed the leading goal scorer from about eight years ago, and she's only a junior this year, and she has another season under her belt. So some really neat highlights coming from our captains here, and I'm thankful. I want to introduce them real quick, if I could do that.
Please.
Okay. I think it'd be easier if I start with our goalie. If I could have Brianna Pugero. There she is. There's Bree. And our defense, if our defense can just step forward, that makes life a lot easier. Yeah, there we go. Our center defender and captain, Giselle Rodriguez, over here. And our right wing, Sophia. And our left wing, Sloan, both of which played great defense this year, kept the ball from going in the net as much as we could. Scoring was a big deal, though, for us. We were an offensive threat this year. So if I could have... Oh, yes. Well, in this position, Alexa played our center sweeper. So a defensive position, but also an offensive, if she wants to. She was in front of the defensive line, and this is Alexa's second year, and she started this year to fill in some big voids for us. And she's also a volleyball player, as you can see, she's pretty tall. Comes in handy. If I could have our midfielder step forward real quick. All right. There they are. Lizeth on the far end, Sienna Grace at center, and on the right wing here, Nellie, all of which contributed. This is the powerhouse of the team. These are the girls that average 11 to 13 miles a game. Running, sprinting, walking, the entire game, without even knowing it, they're averaging 11 to 13 miles a game. So it's a lot of energy. So a lot of our girls come from the cross-country team with the season before soccer, which is a good way to get them in shape. But this is the engine room, so to speak, right here. Let me show you our offensive threat, if our forwards can step forward. Ah, Tanya, yes, a solid left winger. I keep looking left or right, it's hard for me to do that. Tanya's also one of our midfielders, and she's a second-year player, but also a captain, last year Rookie of the Year, the one on the far end there, Tanya. Our forwards, step forward. Here they are. Stephanie, one of the quickest girls we've seen in a long time. If you watch her on the field, it's pretty exciting. You never know how it's gonna end up as she flies down the field. People would come out and cheer for her. She's also an excellent athlete all the way around in our sports program. This is Alexa's last year. You know, I was told just recently by a good friend, if you want to change the culture of a program, you don't start with a first leader, you start with a first follower. Alexa believed in what we were going to create four years ago. She followed that and brought other girls into that, as a result, became a strong leader, but started with following. I appreciate her leadership. I hate losing her. I hope she's a future coach of this team. But Alexa's leadership is different, it's a different style, but it's always supportive of the coaching staff. We're gonna hate to lose her this year. Did I leave anybody out besides our awesome managers? I think both of them are here tonight. Leslie, step forward, and also Lexi, where are you? There she is. Lexi, these are eighth graders, up-and-coming freshmen for our team next year, but served us well while we were here at home, and appreciate all the volunteering that they've done. Guys, thanks for letting us be here tonight to kick off your evening. Once again, league champions, you are a part of that, and we want to say thank you. First-ever team to do it, and we hope that we go further in the future.
Congratulations, girls. If you want to stay, you may. We're gonna be here a while.
Pretty good answers.
I got homework.
Okay. Okay, next we have a presentation by Southern California Edison. Luke?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me this evening. It's an honor to be here and share an update in regards to our DWR grant applications for the water system. Up here is a timeline. Any changes are in red from the last update we shared, and most notably, we were targeting and marching towards a March 9th resubmital of the application. Late Friday afternoon, we received a notification from DWR postponing the opening date from March 9th to March 30th. So we're gonna use that time to, you know, refine and review the material and leverage opportunities and coordinations with the city and other stakeholders to feed into those So now we're marching towards that March 30th date. Any questions? The status is still the same, approximately $58 million left to be awarded to DSal projects through the second round of funding. Any other questions before I move on from this slide?
Is it possible that we can get a copy of the additional comments? The original comments that were received when our plans were denied, and then the additional comments?
I can look into that request for you, and I believe what report through city manager on the interim, what we're able to find out. I don't know what we're able to provide, but I do know there's information we'll get back to on that request. And here's an updated grant resubmital plan based on what we submitted in August of last year, August 31st for the September 1st deadline, and where we're at with how this resubmittal's going in today. So that's the table on the bottom. And so prior updates have shown everything pending. We still have one project we're ironing out there, but we have been able to quantify two other applications that we're submitting. The first one, DSal Plan 2, and that's retroactive funding. Based on comments received from DWR, this project has been updated to reflect actual costs and no projected costs. So that's why you see the change in 3.9 to 3.61 million. The second project, Saltwater Well and DSal Facility, that's still pending. We're still waiting on some engineering to complete. We're finalizing a 30% design and engineering estimate. And as we refine the scope, we'll identify those associated costs in this table, and we look to do that at our next update here at council. So we'll come back with that information. And the third item is the DSal Distribution and Storage. So that's achieving DSal storage in contingency through the Wrigley Reservoir. We have updated this project based on the engineering that progressed since our original application in August, and that value has adjusted down to 4.17 million. And in our original submittal back in August, we had what was a conceptual level design and estimate at that time, and so when that's the case, there's more contingencies, more knows that you want to refine and strategize. But without having any information to support it, going in, you have to keep everything at that high level. And so that's why at that time, it was submitted for 10 million. Based on the engineering that has happened, we were able to identify sections of that infrastructure that we're able to utilize, given the new flows and pressures we're proposing by pumping the water back up. And so if anything's rated and meets a classification that could handle those pressures and flows, we want to maintain it and replace what we need to. So we're able to be strategic in the lines and sections that we're replacing. So I know that's a shift in what was reported previously, but that's why the shift, and we felt that was the best strategy to invoke at that time with what was known and what we know now, and that's where we are. But we have been able to put parameters on that project, on that scope, as we continue to refine the proposal. I believe that's all the additional context I had to share on this slide unless there's questions from the council.
It's nice to see they're reduced. I mean, I think that's attractive to, you know, grant to receive the more reasonable cost.
Yep. That's the strategy. We don't want to put up a fictitious number, but we want it to be sound and supported. And so that's where we're at. And so we're at a 30% engineering and estimate going into this next round in applications. And so we'll reflect based on the progress we made, the application.
Thank you, sir.
And just a summary of next steps here. We weren't able to get in on a conference call with the folks at DWR. I think in the spirit of the email received late Friday in the afternoon, they have a lot of work still and with limited resources. So we've been emailing clarifications based on what we need to know in order to finalize different aspects of the proposals. We still expect to get on a conference call with them. They've expressed willingness to do that, just to confirm what we presented here on that grant resubmital plan, and do that before the submittal deadline. An additional step, we're submitting the projects through the local Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, and by doing that, that takes coordination with the city of Avalon, and so Jordan Monroe's been vigilant in providing resources and time and attending meetings on that front. So we appreciate, you know, the city's recognition and providing that resource. And we're planning to, through this week, based on the projects that have been outlined, actually submit through their OPTI database, through their portal, so that they get sent to their committee reviewers that will review, comment, question, and thereby approve, and by doing so, adopting it in their plan. And so that formal presentation will occur March 20th. They have those monthly unless they cancel them due to insufficient projects. And that same day, we'll come back here to share an update to council. Finalized grant applications in anticipation of that March 30th date. And as mentioned before, they provide updates and results and draft recommendations on a quarterly basis through this continuous application process. So we flagged June 30th as a reasonable time to know if we're successful. Are there any questions before I move on from this slide? So that is everything in these slides.
Questions of the community staff? Okay. Keep your mouth shut, Jim.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luke. Thanks, Luke. Okay, now we have... Go ahead. We have a couple of proclamations. Cindy has one, and Joe will be reading the other.
Okay.
Joseph, if you want to go up forward, that would be great for yours.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Where's Steve?
I'd be happy to be there, but I'll cough. I make sure that...
Hey, Barbara. Barbara.
It's for Barbara here.
Hi. I think that works nice, then you can...
It doesn't matter. How are you doing?
Nice to see you.
Okay, I want to read a proclamation here. This is for Barbara Crowe, and she has been running our Avalon Bay News for the last several decades, and this is how the proclamation goes. "It's a proclamation of the city of Avalon honoring the Avalon Bay News and Barbara Crowe's retirement. Whereas, on August 1990, Barbara Crowe published the first edition of the Avalon Bay News. Many people from the community have contributed to the newspaper by volunteering their time to write articles, and like Barbara has said many times before, your news is our news. Throughout these years, Barbara has published 1,429 weekly editions, which covered many of our family events such as birthdays, anniversaries, graduations, proms, births, and deaths. As Barbara's 70th birthday quickly approaches, she has decided it was time to retire and published the last edition of the Avalon Bay News on Thursday, February 1st, 2018. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Avalon would like to extend their best wishes to Barbara on her retirement and the public recognition for her many years of service to our community, publishing the Avalon Bay News dated this day, the 6th day of March 2018. Sign this city council." And this is for you. Our pleasure.
I really couldn't have done it with all the help of the community, and especially all the people that worked for me. And one of the most important ones was Norma, who is with me for well over a decade. But thank you, everybody, for reading the paper all these years, and for everything everybody contributed, and I'm retired. Yay!
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Cassidy?
And I have a second proclamation tonight, which is headed for the Children's Dental Health Clinic. A proclamation of the city of Avalon honoring the Children's Dental Health Clinic. Whereas, the Children's Dental Health Clinic is a nonprofit organization established in 1932. Whereas, the vision of the Children's Dental Health Clinic is to see that all children grow up with healthy, confident smiles. Whereas, the Catalina Children's Dental Health Clinic has been providing quality dental treatment and oral health education to the children on Santa Catalina Island for 30 years. Whereas, the Children's Dental Health Clinic is the safety net dental home for all of Santa Catalina Island's children. Therefore, the city council of the city of Avalon hereby commends and thanks the Children's Dental Health Clinic on their 85th anniversary, celebrating 30 years of service on Santa Catalina Island, dated the 6th day of March 2018.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Oh, there we go. Why don't you kind of do this next?
We're not gonna have a public hearing. The MTA, or Metro Transit Authority, is required to present a public hearing on the community's unmet public transit needs in accordance with the Transportation Development Act, TDA, Article 8. And TDA Article 8 funds are currently being used by the city of Avalon to fund Avalon's consolidated jitney program, which includes art, dial ride, and ACT. Recommended actions: Open the public hearing. It's open. It's up to you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Arminia Saint, and I'm Metro's project manager for TDA 8, and we're here to conduct a public hearing. Before, I have some opening remarks that explains what the TDA 8 unmet needs is. The public portion of this meeting is held to hear testimony regarding the allocation of Transportation Development Act, TDA Article 8 funds. The California Transportation Development Act enacted in 1972, Senate Bill 325, provides the major source of state funds to support public transit services. One quarter of a cent is collected as part of the statewide retail sales tax in this county and placed in a local transportation fund, which is TDA 3, 4, and 8, which is used to support public transportation within the county. TDA fund is divided as follows. TDA 4 recipients receive 91.6%, TDA 3 is capped at 2%, and TDA Article 8 receives a 6.4% share. By statute, most of the money in LA County goes to support the operation of our regional bus service, metro, and the municipal operators such as Long Beach Transit and Santa Monica. These services are funded in part by TDA Article 4. Additionally, some of the funds are used to support facilities for pedestrian and bicycles. This is known as TDA Article 3. Article 8 of the TDA requires that a proportional share, based on a population, approximately 64.4% share of the sales tax revenue be allocated to those areas in the county that do not have metro service because they're located outside of metro's service area. These areas are Santa Clarita Valley, Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island. Transit needs can reasonably be met through an expansion of existing transportation systems by establishing new systems or by contracting for services. However, if there are no unmet transit needs, which can be reasonably met with these funds, the funds may be used for local, public streets, roads, and purposes. While the purpose of this hearing is to determine how TDA Article 8 funds should be allocated, your testimony about the transit funds may be useful to local decision-makers who are planning possible uses for Prop A, Prop C, Measure R, and Measure M funds. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority holds a public hearing each year to determine what transit needs exist in your community before recommending how these funds should be allocated. LACMTA staff will compile your comments along with the comments made at all hearings, including written comments received before the deadline. The Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, composed of local residents and social service providers, will consider your comments and make a recommendation to the TDA 8 hearing board. The hearing board will make a recommendation to the full LACMTA board. The LACMTA board will act in June or July to make the findings about the use of TDA Article 8 funds in your community. The LACMTA board's recommendation will be forwarded to the state for review and approval. If you wish to submit written comments in addition to or instead of testifying verbally, the record for all hearings will be kept open for two weeks after the conclusion of the public hearings. Written comments must be received by March 21st, 2018, for all affected areas. Your written comments should be submitted to the following address: Arminia Saint, TDA Article 8 Hearing, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Mail Stop 99-4-3, One Gateway Plaza, LA, California 90012, or you can email into sainta@metro.net. The public testimony portion of the hearing will now begin. Please remember to state your name and any organization you represent. Thank you. Opening it to public hearing. Any comments? That was easy. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do you close it, and then I'll ask a question?
We'll close it, now you can ask a question.
Close it.
Closed.
Okay. So how much money typically does that quarter cent turn out to be for Avalon?
For Avalon, it's about $120,000, $30,000.
Annually?
Annually, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Saint.
Thank you.
See you next year.
And will the information, though, be on our website about where they can respond to if they want to provide public hearing?
Yeah.
If they want to provide input?
Absolutely.
Okay, announcements and written communications?
Yes. I have several announcements to make. Just wanted to remind the public that vehicle registration is ongoing right now until April 3rd, and hours are from 9:00 to 11:00, and 2:30 to 4:30, and that's Monday through Friday. Our municipal election is on Tuesday, April 10th. We have one voting polling place, and that is right here at City Hall in the lobby, and that's from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Last day to register to vote is March 26th, and last day to request a vote by mail is April 3rd. And the ballot sample books came in the mail today, so you should be receiving yours. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Department head report?
Department head reports?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works with Public Works Update. Hey, this past week, we worked on the mole project, Phase 1. Remember, we have two phases out there. First phase is the pier portion, and the second phase is actually the building and the floats. Okay, so we're working on Phase 1 right now. We met with a design engineer on site to investigate the staging areas for the contractor and the fencing of the area of the pier and of the ramp area that we'll need for staging, and how long and duration and what the language would be in our contract documents for that. We also reached out to the businesses out there on the mole to see what their needs were so that we could move some things around on top of the table there while we're under construction and still not, make sure that we're not impacting their businesses, and still also look for how that parking and how the multi-modal facilities operate when we're doing that work. And we don't think, at least during this first phase, that we're not going to have a tremendous impact on the taxis or the transit going in there. It's mainly on the back of where the business is, actually like the baggage area where they store. Okay, so that, we're anticipating to start construction on that in October 2018. So that's this October, and we're hoping that would finish up by April of 2019. Okay? That's our off-season.
So what improvements are you actually considering, Bob?
Okay, so everything underneath the pier, so the, well, you can consider the girders, you know, which are, they're called pile caps. Like the bottom four or five inches that, there's really no concrete left and all the steel rebar is exposed. So we did a repair in the 90s on the first eight of those, and then I think there's about 20 of them. The remaining, they're not in very good shape. So when we get done with this, we're looking for a 20 to 30-year service life to be extended on it. So that would be all of the underneath, so all the piles, all those pile caps, and all the edges of the pier. And then we're looking at some different alternatives for the top of the pier. So you would think of where that half, it's just the pier that's over the water from the rock revetment, not the piece that's toward the floats, okay, of that top surface. We've been looking if we could afford to replace that total top surface, or whether we just can rehabilitate it. And time will tell when we get the bids back, but we're putting both of those options out there so that we're not just getting, you know, a structural patch on that. We are trying to attempt to put a whole new surface on the top of that. Okay? So that's what we're doing with that piece. We also were out there on Pebbley Beach Road. We increased the site distance at the Pebbley Beach Crosswalk. That was requested by Councilmember Olson for us to take a look at. So pretty much just like the Vons Crosswalk, we pulled back and restricted the parking in front of where that crosswalk is so that you can get 115 feet of site distance, and that's what's needed, a 20 mile per hour speed limit. So somebody entering that crosswalk, the vehicles actually see them all the way from leaving that ramp instead of being behind a vehicle. Okay? So we did that on both sides. We are, we worked with Chief Krug to get additional parking in some of the other red zones brought, reduced down. And so we went out and analyzed that, so we think that we can mitigate all of that parking that was reduced toward that one end, toward that crosswalk. And we're compiling locations for pedestrian improvements throughout the city. We're concentrating those efforts right now, replacing, looking at replacing some of the oldest pavers on the waterfront, and that funding on that was the CDBG funding. Okay, so that piece of that. And then today, with our Public Works O&amp;M staff, we completed all-day training for OSHA Required Annual Training, and that was here in our City Council chambers, and went very well. And we were fully engaged in that. And then another month from now, we'll do training on aerial lifts and forklift training, get everybody certified again, bring all that training up. So we're working month by month, trying to get caught up with all that training that we were a little bit behind on. So that's why I have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I have four quick things. The first one is I was receiving some complaints about the stairwell from Metropole up to East Whitley. There was people, I'd say kids, but they're young adults, smoking marijuana, smoking methamphetamine, drinking, and I received these complaints from a few residents. And I went up there myself. I wanted to see what it really looked like, because I wasn't familiar with the East Whitley area right there being, you know, pretty new to the island. And the first thing, when we got there, deputy drove me up there to show me where it was. There was two people sitting there. One was smoking methamphetamine. He was arrested for possession of methamphetamine under the influence and narcotic smoking pipes. So I want to make it very clear, that area is going to be off limits to criminal activity. The deputies are going to be walking those stairs, they're going to be out of uniform sometimes, we might put hidden cameras up there. We cannot have any criminal activity up at those stairs anymore. That's going to be off limits. That's the first thing I have. The second thing is during the last council meeting, I brought up about, I had a couple people come to me and complain about a marijuana delivery service. Subsequently, I received a letter from the sheriff's office that somebody wrote anonymously to the sheriff's department saying that there was a delivery service operating illegally. And I've met with that delivery service, the personnel involved in that. They have completely shut down their operation. I don't know, I don't have any evidence that they were running illegally, but from the rumors that people have told me they were, and that problem has been solved, and I believe tonight is one of the topics for marijuana delivery service. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that the sheriff's department is on that, and we are working on that. The next one is you're going to see several new deputies on the island working the sheriff's department. We had one that retired, that was a dispatcher, Steve Denning, and we have another one that's transferring off the island, Jeff Flotrie. And we're getting, by the end of March, we'll have Adam Colette. He's a new deputy. I'll bring him to one of the council meetings so everybody can meet him, because I want him to know, I want the public to know who he is. And the other one is Doug McClure. He's another deputy that will be coming to the island. And we'll have a female dispatcher named Jill Diaz. She's going to be starting in the beginning, so when you call 911 on her shift, that's what, who you'll be talking to when you call 911. And lastly, we're having our Community Advisory Committee, our second meeting, is going to be in March. The members have been already advised of the date and so forth, and the purpose of that meeting is basically to hear from the community what they want the sheriff's department to focus on, such as the stairwell where people are using illegal drugs. We hear about that, we go out there and we enforce that law and go from there. And tonight, we have a dispatcher, 911 dispatcher, Rick Cordero. He's working dispatch tonight, one of our regular patrol deputies. Any questions for me?
I just want to comment. I've gotten complaints on the stairs, the stairs up on Upper Crescent, you know, behind the
Oh, the ones that go all the way up?
Yeah, because that's a great view, and we should sit up and enjoy the view of Avalon, and sometimes people are up there, and then they're not even nice to the people who go up and down the stairs, so they can
Sure, we can focus our attention on that.
Just take a peek every once
Yeah, no problem at all. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question? So what, is there some criminal activity? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, no, they're not just saying that. They're kind of like the stairs that he's talking about.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Amanda Cook, Planning Director. So our favorite project, Vons, is doing really well. They finished pouring their stem walls this week. They didn't see any big rain delays. Mr. Greenlaw has advised me that they have got all of their utilities in the streets except for one. They still have got to get the gas run. Let's see, we got our fully executed grant agreement from the Coastal Commission for our LCP update grant. They've also provided comments back on the request for proposals, so that is ready to go out. I've already been contacted by a couple of companies that want to be sure they receive a copy of that RFP, so that's exciting. I attended the Gateway COG Planning Directors Climate Action Change Framework Workshop last week. A lot of really good information there. Actually have a grant where they're doing four workshops for this purpose, for cities to develop plans to deal with climate change. And interesting enough, it's not just sea level rise, it's also extended fire seasons, it extended hot seasons where you've got excessively high heat. So that creates a lot of issues for cities, and it's good to see what a lot of cities are doing for that. Let's see, we have, this month on the Planning Commission meeting, we have two sign variances, one for Vons and one's for the Chimes Tower. They want to put up a fundraising sign up there. We approved a sign variance last month for the Trailhead, so those are for them to have some extra signage on the Trailhead building, and I think that's about, well, half. Any questions for me?
Has Vons updated the suggested completion date of their new store?
I have not seen a new completion date, no. I can try to have that for you next
Okay, cool.
Are they still working, is Vons still working on their conditions of approval?
Yes, they are.
That's an ongoing thing, right?
Yes, it is. Some things where you're monitoring during, all during the project, some things have to be done right before certificate of occupancy, so yes, there's an ongoing list.
Okay, great. Thanks, Amanda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple quick updates. Monday, March 19th, is going to be our first of a series of our community master plan meetings. We've got one scheduled here from 5:00 to 6:30 in council chambers. It'll be open to the whole community. We contracted with City Fabric to run that for us, and they'll be leading that. That same day, they will also be leading, it looks like two, one at the high school around the lunchtime, we're going to try and get some of the middle school and the high school students involved with that, and then one at Singing Waters with the prime times. We'll do one around lunch, and then we'll have the evening community workshop on the 19th at 5:30.
What time is that?
Excuse me, 5:00 to 6:30, 5:00 to 6:30 here in council
The one here is council, okay, thanks.
And we're going to, I'm sorry, but we're going to be doing a little translation into Spanish?
We will have that available as well, yes. And then just a couple quick reminders, on the 21st with the Rotary, it's the Community Planting Day, and so inviting the community to come out, council members to come out to join us. There'd be mostly, we'll be placing the plants around the city in the morning, staff will be working with the Rotary on that, and then having the community come out around lunchtime, just after lunchtime for an afternoon of planting to beautify our city. Spring Fest is the 29th, Thursday the 29th, mark your calendar there, and then our Egg Day at Descanso Beach on the 31st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. Just a quick update, you may or may not remember, some months ago, I advised you of a successful federal grant that we received to have some upgrades here at the council chambers when it's pressed into service as an emergency operations center. A lot of behind-the-scenes stuff, but one of the items was, is an additional flat screen that's going to be installed. One of the things that we learned about federal grants is that we received the equipment, and then we were advised that we needed to submit additional paperwork to actually literally mount flat screens on the wall and things like that. I recently got that paperwork back early this week, so you may see some of those upgrades coming into service here in the council chambers. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I have just a brief update for you. I just wanted to say that we had the Avalon Harbor dive cleanup that just happened. We had over 400 divers participate in that. That was the 37th annual cleanup. The conditions for the dive were fabulous, everything went super well, and I'd just like to thank everyone who participated, especially the volunteers and organizers. Everybody did a really good job, and there wasn't any issues. So that was fantastic. In February, Harbor Patrol officers received tactical medical for first responder training. The program was designed to define a medical threat assessment and to include medical plan during such an operation. The eight Harbor Patrolmen that went learned techniques to control life-threatening bleeding during care in a hot zone and treat life-threatening injuries during a warm zone. During the program, the students demonstrated moving and extricating victims during a hostile environment and while under fire. Excellent training, we got a lot out of it. I got a lot of good feedback from that. One more thing I wanted to bring to everybody's attention is in 2018, the Division of Boating and Waterways is now accepting applications for the California, or for the boater card, California boater card. The State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways is now accepting the applications. The card verifies that its holder has successfully taken and passed an approved boater safety course of education. Once issued the California boater card, it will remain valid for the owner's lifetime. California and the US Coast Card accident data show that the states with some form of boating safety education have fewer accidents and fatalities. I'm happy to report that all our sanitation crew have received this card, so
And where will they do this training?
It's online.
Oh, then we have to be in a boat?
It's, yeah, it's all online. You can go to CaliforniaBoaterCard.com.
Okay.
Right now, in 2018, it's the age of 20 or less is required to have this while operating a boat on the, on our waterways. And then in 2019, that'll be, go up to age 25.
Wow.
And then so on and so forth.
Right.
Do you have any questions for me?
What was that website again?
It was www-californiabotercard.com. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're moving right along. City Manager Report.
I just have a couple things to report back to council, and that is, at the last meeting, when we had the Grants Administrator Consultants on the agenda, then we went back the next day and we checked in with Amoresco. They unfortunately didn't offer the services that we were looking for at this time, and we did pick Townsend Public Affairs after checking some of the references, well, with all the other company also, which was California Consulting. And that I wanted to let you know that we did place a link on the website for the mid-year budget report, and
City Attorney?
I have two important issues. First one is to add an item to the agenda under the Brown Act for Subsequent Need. The city has priorly, prior retained a Daniel app to work on stormwater grants, and there was actually an application for a stormwater grant for $300,000. That application has been submitted to the state, but we learned Monday, Denise and I learned on Monday, that we need to have a resolution from the City Council in support of the application that has already been passed. So rather than wait another two weeks for the council to do the resolution, we'd like to, your permission to add a resolution in support of an application that we've already filed, it is before you, it's just a pro forma to support the application that we've already filed, again, to get $300,000. If we wait two weeks, there's a chance that, again, the getting that money would be diminished, and so we're asking by a four-fifths vote to add this item to the agenda. It would be on the consent calendar as item number 5A.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Hi.
Okay, call for the vote. Is that all you have?
No, the second item is more substantial. I am announcing to the City of Avalon
All eyes.
All eyes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are announcing to the City of Avalon that Best Besson Krieger is adding eight attorneys to our Los Angeles office. These attorneys are from the firm Jenkins &amp; Hogan. We're taking all the attorneys from Jenkins &amp; Hogan. They're going to be adding seven cities to the firms, to the cities that we represent. We've reached an agreement, now where the cities are just approving that. We hope to have them aboard April We hope to have them aboard April 1st. They're basically coastal cities, so this will enhance our coastal practice, and if you, if the name Jenkins is familiar, that is Mike Jenkins, who was the former city attorney of Avalon, so he is now joining our firm. Him, his wife Kristy, and their six associates.
Great. Guess that's good news. Council member report. Who would like to start?
I have none.
Okay.
Just want to give a quick shout out, shout out to Elias Club, I think last week, two weeks ago, installation of smoke detectors throughout residents of the City of Avalon who didn't have them or were in need of them. I guess that went really well, and they're looking forward to bringing it back shortly. They did a really good job, and it's amazing how many people really didn't have the proper smoke detectors and stuff around. But could we just do the Elias Club?
I, I've got a couple of things that I want to just, want to ask here.
So we adopted the Scions, Scion IQs into our vehicle ordinance a while back, and I'm not too sure that was, that was, that was a good idea, I believe it brought a whole new perspective on vehicles into the community and a whole new element for people to be able to freely travel throughout the island. I, that, that was my intention of bringing those vehicles in. I'm, I'm beginning to question my own reason for doing that. Not the reason, but actually the outcome of what these vehicles have brought in. I believe that if we had as many Scions as we have golf carts, we'd have huge problem in this town. And so I'd like to bring it to the council somehow and ask for possibly putting this on, on an agenda, on the, an item on the agenda, to draw back the ordinance to a capped number of Scions, because I, for one, I thought more people would use them to get into the interior and enjoy the entire island. That was, that was my point, and because I enjoy the interior so much that I thought, well, we need other people to appreciate this. And I don't think a lot of people are using them for that purpose, and for whatever purposes people want to use them for, that's fine, but they're really wide and they go really fast. We don't have a lot of space in this town, and you can't go really fast in this town, so I'd like to ask the council if we could possibly put a cap on how many of those that we have in this town, not to draw back from when people would like to replace them, they're welcome to replace them with a new Scion if they have them, so the number of them we have stays the same. I don't want to see it grow beyond, I don't know how many we have here, I think it's below 100 at this point, but I would not see, want to see the numbers go up before, beyond 100 at this point, because I just don't think our streets are wide enough, I don't think our streets are, our traffic speed laws, they, we don't need vehicles that go 60, more golf carts that go 60 miles an hour, which is actually what a Scion is. So I think we should put this on an agenda, as an agenda item, if I could ask the city attorney to what we would have to do to do that. That way people who want these vehicles can have, can have another month to get them, or as long, that is if the council would like to go with me on this. As long as people have some time, if they'd like one of these vehicles, they can get them, but I just, I don't think they're safe for our community after, after, in retrospect, after seeing the way, the way they perform in the community. I see some people like them, but my intentions were, were not to have 2,000 of these extra wide, extra fast golf carts in the community. A golf cart is great for this community. I don't see needing a vehicle that's bigger and faster, so what...
There's a couple of things I would like to know, is actually how many Scions do we have in town, and Dudley, I think, can get us that number pretty quickly, not today. And then I'm also curious, how many of those Scions, if the conservancy would work with us and tell us how many of those Scions actually have interior permits?
Right. Yeah, that, that would be interesting to know, but all the same...
I think that's a start to know, you know, I think that's a start to know where we may want to go.
Okay.
Because I don't think there's 100. Hey, Dudley.
I bet it's close.
I don't think Dudley's here.
No, he doesn't know.
You don't know? Okay, yeah, but he can get us that information.
But I'd like to see too, probably when they first did this, and hindsight's great, was when you get one of those, if you have a golf cart, and you get one of those, to get the golf cart shipped off the island when you buy one of those. I don't know how many there are on the island, but I've been told that not one golf cart's been shipped off the island when they've got these new cars. So talk about adding congestion to that, and that was, I think, part of the thing we were hoping for, but they didn't do it, and it hasn't been done. So maybe now we can look into it, if you buy one of those and have a golf cart, one or the other's got to get shipped off the island.
So the council has two options. We can bring it at the next meeting with the information requested in terms of how many we have, the swapping out of golf carts and stuff, and then you could direct us to have an ordinance, or I could bring, and I'd also have the ordinance, the old ordinance along with that as a study session. Or I could draft an ordinance, have the information, but leave the number of, the number of vehicles that you're capping it at blank, and then at that meeting you decide, and then that, that would become the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
So it's either which way the council wants to go, to add that to the agenda.
Then there, this ordinance would, if you, if you would direct your attention on the fact that it's not just Scions, at this point, the smart cars are also just as wide, and if you have one, that's great, you can keep it, and I'm not trying to take anything away, we don't want to take anything away from anybody since our intentions were good enough, but I, I think instead of compounding something that I can foresee as being a problem in the future, that we put a timeout on it. So it would be the microcars...
Micro, right.
Yeah, in, in general. And then, so we, if we could find out how many Scions and the smart cars we have, that would be great, and, okay, that was my first announcement, and then another one is, is something that I'd just like to clear the air on, and that is, the Exceptional Music Company has left the island, so they're not going to have concerts downtown anymore down on Front Street. Now, it was, it was brought to my attention that somebody was saying from the Exceptional Music Company that they're, they are no longer doing their concerts because the city withdrew funds from their program. Can, can anybody clear the air on this and let me know whether or not we were even giving them funds to begin with?
We didn't give them money.
So we didn't give them money, and so we didn't take anything from the, to make the Exceptional Music Program go away, they went on, away on their own volition then. Okay.
Joe, I'm sorry, you were looking down, just going to address that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. I think I can put the two parts together. Our contract that was in place for the Exceptional for the concerts on Wrigley Stage was based on a calendar year, which put us mid fiscal year, and this year our funding was capped, so we asked Ray to pause the concerts until we knew the outcome of a, of an adjusted mid-year city budget. Meanwhile, he lost another contract in the community, and the cumulative sum of not having that contract and not having us yet been able to contract with him caused him to make the decision to withdraw the concert series as previously executed. I am in ongoing conversations with Ray and with two other proponents for concerts, maybe, maybe even a third proponent for, for a future concert series, so please stand by, that's, that's, that's still not a dead animal in its entirety, but the financial aspect related to our budget, as it was tangent to the city funding for this fiscal year.
Okay, so we didn't draw back anything that would...
We did.
Okay.
You didn't.
Oh, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that, that they knew that it wasn't the, the members of this diocese and our, and the people we represent that drew that back and stopped those concerts, but we'd love to see the concerts continue on, possibly with some local acts as well, that would be great, yeah.
Yes.
Anyway, thanks for working on that.
Right, thank you.
Appreciate the clarification, and that's all I have for the night.
Can I just ask for clarification, please? So are we bringing back subject of Scions and smart cars as a study session to discuss how you would like to proceed forward before we get the city attorney involved with changing the ordinance?
I would think so.
As of this point, I can tell you, unless you know how things are always changing
on the agenda, April 3rd is our, probably the time I could get that put on.
Okay.
And I think just look at stats and numbers any which way you can, you know?
We'll bring that information to you.
Okay. So I'm also curious, have there been any accidents, you know, from police reports standpoint, have there been any accidents with the Scions or with the smart cars? Include that kind of information as well?
I saw one on fire today at the, on the freeway here, driving here, but that doesn't...
Oh my gosh, yeah, okay.
Did he pull over and help?
He did pull over and help. I was trying to make him very, so no.
So I went to the SCAG meeting last week, and there were some interesting things that I gave to Denise, and I think the majority of it is going to go on Amanda's desk, but one was about mobile home and prefabs and how those work. The other, another interesting thing was preservation, but it's not just that architectural preservation that people do, it's also a cultural preservation. So when you go into your area and you want to do something, maybe it's not because Frank Lloyd Wright built that, but the time in history when people resided in there and, thinking, thinking of Tremont, you know, I mean, that is, that has some cultural history there that's, that's interesting. So I don't know, and when you're talking about something that was in here, one of your things for tonight, I mean, and it talks about preservation with something listed, and I don't know what we have in terms of preservation at all in there, I don't know. So maybe when you talk on that subject, you can see if there's, tell us if there is anything. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Were you talking about historical preservation of, did you say culture and...
Yeah, restoring the culture as well.
Oh, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be...
Just architecture.
Exactly, not just the casino building, but it's what had happened in there. And, and there's different registries that, that facilities can get on, you know, to, for example, I was in the, in the Brittany Bryant Hopper's place, and at the very back, she made some comment, I said, I gotta look at the brick and the plaster on that. Well, she said it was two buildings from your grandpa's time, probably, you know, doing prohibition and whatever, and anyway, there's something about that, if they ever remodeled, it'd be cute to keep that piece of, keep that piece of history, and so anyway.
There's some strong conversations and strong laws in some cities about historical preservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've met some people over here in Avalon that have seen some of the beautiful buildings and architecture we have here, and said, you guys should get some architectural, some laws that would protect these, these buildings and this, some of the work that was done around here, so...
And there's the point where, you know, sometimes the dollars don't match, I mean, because that's the other problem. So let's say I bought the oldest house in Avalon, but I don't have a lot of money, I couldn't restore it to the way if perhaps Ollie bought it, and he could bring it back to its original thing, but, but if you have, if you keep the facade, you know, you keep some of the things that the public can see, and then you can go inside and do whatever you want. So I think there's some creative things we could, we could maybe look into in the future. That's all.
That's a great point.
Okay. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. It will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. Is Cassidy going to come up and speak?
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley, and I just wanted to, if I may, use this forum to remind everyone that we have a big election coming up in just over a month, and there are two candidate forums coming up, one just day after tomorrow, March 8th. Okay, right? Okay, being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and The Islander, and it is here in these council chambers, and the next one will be on the 12th of March from 6:30 to 9:00, also in the council chambers. And anyway, it's a really important way for the community to get to know our candidates and a great exercise in democracy, so come on down, you can watch, the CPAC one's going to be on TV. Is yours going to be televised as well? Okay, good, all right, so that's what...
Thank you, Paula.
Council, staff, Brock Goslin, 318 Whitley. I want to take a few minutes of your time tonight to go over a few items, some of them I've already brought up here in the past, some of them I've been trying to take care of subtly behind doors, but I'm going to just pull the Band-Aids off. One of the things I want to do here is set the record straight on the closing Catalina Laundry. People are coming to me and giving me, you know, their thoughts and their sympathies for a service that was provided to this community since the early 50s, under my direction for, well, last month would have been 30 years. The Island Company and I do not see eye to eye business-wise, that's their prerogative, and that's my prerogative. Why I'm also here, though, is I'm to, I'm here to lay blame for my closing my laundry facility, for being legislated out of business by some of the fee structures and rules and regulations that I didn't seem to get stopped before they were originally put in. Main reason that it's here, in a short answer, is this legislation I consider stick legislation rather than carrot legislation. The fees, structures that were put into the sewer system against businesses in this town have absolutely no window or no way of leading people into any type of green type of business practices or water savings. For years, and I've stated it before, I've stated it behind closed doors to some of you, I've had some time with Bob Messer, but I'm done with that. But for years, anyone that had a commercial laundry hooked up to the sewer system in this town did so while paying a fee to do. That was the rules, that's what everyone was supposed to do. Some paid that fee, others did not. Anyone that did not pay that fee was then competing against Catalina Laundry on an uneven foothold. And I tried subtly to get this changed. It did get changed. The city has since adopted that nobody pays a fee for hooking up a commercial washer to the sewer system except for myself and Bill Rhodes at Cottonwood Laundry. I stated already that this is double taxation, and I'll go through that in a little bit. But part of the reasoning for changing the fee structure, as stated to me by staff, was this, was making it easier to collect fees, because they couldn't be going into everybody's businesses, you know, hotels and restaurants, seeing if they had a commercial washer hooked up. I was easy, everybody knew where I was, they knew my washers. So I have now gone from paying in years past $241 a month for city fees, I'm now paying 751. Well, I was paying, I'm not going to do it anymore, close the doors. I asked once before, didn't get very far with it, so I'm going to ask the community again to mulle it over in their own minds. Those that were paying the sewer fees, do we get any money back because others were not? Or is the city going to go after those that weren't paying the sewer fees and should have? Or do we just going to sweep it away? There's a real easy way to see what some of the fees need to be collected, it's right in here, real easy to find this out. I'm a single one council person out who's in charge of a hotel. That hotel, the last time I looked, was paying for 17 rooms, they have 19. They have 19. I'd like to find out when those fees are going to be paid to the city in arrears. I don't know how long the washer at that particular hotel, the Aurora, was hooked up, not paying city fees before July 1st, but I'd like to know if it's going to pay its arrears fees. Maybe some of these arrears fees can be collected and given to those of us, like the Glenmore Plaza and myself, who paid these fees in earnest and didn't get anything from it. Most of these notes are from my memory, because I tried to go back to the assessment page on the city to fine tune my notes, fine tune my numbers here before I talked to you. But the city assessment page has been going under some major changes, moving around, hard to find, and it wasn't even up last night when I looked. So I have to ask the community and you guys, as a laundry, why would I want to pay a fee that no one else that's competing against me has to? Why should I? I'm going to close the doors. As a hotelier, I was told that the sewer fees were designed to take into account the thought process and the proposed impact to our sewer systems by the laundering operations in those hotel rooms. So why, as a hotelier, would I then spend more money again to go to an operation like Catalina Laundry, who's a green operation, producing four times as much laundry per gallon of our potable water than anybody else on this island? Why would I pay them more money when I'm already paying for the sewer impact fee? Might as well hook up a washer, because I have no fees involved. So hoteliers and restaurants are being double taxed. As a leader in water recovery and management, why am I going to now spend $20,000 a year, which I've been doing for 28 years, to recover water, because I thought it was the right thing to do, and now be paying an additional $8,000 a year in sewer fees when I am putting very little water into the sewer system per unit of laundry processed? And I'm also not adding lint, sand, debris that the sewer system has to handle. I went by and talked to the guys at the wastewater treatment facility, and I'll be making a phone call to Ryan Bonner this week. I think that the operator for the sewer systems and treatment facility at this, in this community, need to come talk to you guys about a little renegotiation, because there's going to be an additional 2 million gallons of effluent going to the sewer treatment plant from all points in this town, trying to make up what I walked away from and not going to do for this community. And it's going to have lint and sand and debris and swizzle sticks and paper napkins in it. Now, another question I want to almost answer here tonight. A lot of people have been coming to me, trying to find out from me what the Island Company's intentions are for the facility I'm vacating. I can't answer that question. Two things I will say, first of which is, the Island Company has absolutely no incentive with your fee structure to do a damn thing for any of the other businesses in this community. Why would they step up to pay what's going to be close to $1,300 a year per washer to do anything for this community? If they just do it for their own use, for their own properties, that puts them in the realm of an OPL, on-premise laundry, that doesn't pay fees. Why are they going to step up and give you guys $8,000 more to do something for the community? I won't blame them. Now, if they want to step up and do something for the community, if they want it, they think that there's money to be made from it, or there's a business consciousness that they want to take care of the rest of the hotels and the rest of the restaurants in this community, I will also join them and I will fight, help them fight what I still consider a non-equitable, non-fair, and non-defendable fee structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do you want to leave your notes with us? Do you want to leave your notes with us? You know, it was when we were going through all of that, Rock, and you were coming to the meetings, we voted on that, we voted on those fees, and I think it was unanimous. But then we said, but, but let's have finance take a better look at that, and if we had to make adjustments to you. And I don't know if we just dropped the ball, or if you had other meetings and it just didn't go anywhere, I don't know. But I do remember saying we could look at you specifically, because you were the only one, and maybe.
I was asked to provide water usage numbers currently and in past years, and that was non-German to where I was going with this. If I can produce four times as much laundry per gallon of water than any other person in this community, I shouldn't be paying more for my sewer fees than anybody else in this community. That's the bottom line. That is a stick regulation, not a carrot regulation, that helps me maintain spending the hundreds of thousands of dollars I have over the last 30 years.
Hello, Shannon Hill, 110 Las Lamas. I'm just going to read from a prepared statement. The citizens of our town have a big decision coming up before then on April 10th. It is a decision to keep health care on this island. It is a decision to build a new modern hospital and clinic for all of our residents to use. It is a decision that will impact the future of this island and its residents for decades to come. The state of California will shut down our existing medical center building in the year 2030. That's only 12 years away. That is barely enough time to plan and build a new facility. So what happens without a hospital? Well, what would happen after that last boat runs and your flu is so bad that you can barely breathe? Where would you go? What about your young daughter or son screaming in pain with an ear infection at midnight? Where would you take them? Our current emergency room sees between five and 15 patients every single day. Where would they go? Who would care for them and who would treat them? Both the hospital and foundation boards have spent the last several years with professional consultants who have performed study after study to determine the feasibility of building a new hospital here. Community input was asked for and received for these studies. Several of the faces I see before me attended a lot of the meetings that have been held over these past two years. This proposed $1 transit tax will not only provide for a new hospital for our residents, but will provide for the future of health care on our island. It is my understanding that new opposition is coming towards this ballot measure from people who don't, who do not even live on Catalina, excuse me. I encourage all of our residents to think about who is behind any opposition. It is up to our residents to come out on April 10th and take a stand, a stand for their own health and safety and the health and safety of their families. There will be two community forums coming up that I hope everyone with questions can attend. One of them will be next Thursday, March 15th, at 7:00 PM at the parish hall at St. Catherine's Church. This forum will be in, will be a bilingual presentation. The following Thursday on March 22nd, also 7:00 PM at St. Catherine's Church, will be another forum. So I do, I encourage everyone to attend these forums, bring your questions, and we will have the answers for you. I encourage all of our residents to vote yes on April 10th for the new transit tax, to vote yes for a new hospital, to vote yes for the future of health care on Catalina Island.
Thank you, Shannon. Cassidy is going to talk today.
Hi. My name is Ruby, this is Tyler, and our daughter, Cassidy. Our families have been part of the island for over 50 years. Two years ago, I came before a city council and expressed them with building a new hospital, including me and my family. Today, I'm not here to talk to you about the politics of building a hospital or answer questions about the hospital. I am standing here again to tell you and my community on why I believe in my heart why we need a hospital. When I spoke to this council two years ago, I expressed that my family is one of many families that have experienced scary health issues on this island. I'm almost 100% positive that eight out of 10 of us know a loved one, neighbor, or coworker in our community that has been affected by a health scare. And if it wasn't for such an amazing, strong community that are, that we have, we might have not, we might have felt lost and alone. I know that for some, a dollar ticket sounds hard to do. I myself live paycheck to paycheck, but to think that there may be a day, that there may not be a hospital scares me. If there wasn't a hospital the night that my daughter wasn't feeling well, she may not be standing here today. And to think that that could have been a possibility and may be, well, be a possibility for our future and our future children scares me. If we did not have a hospital, we will not be able to run labs and imaging tests that could be life-saving. How many of us will go undiagnosed or flown over for something we didn't need to be flown over? How many longtime islanders, the heart and soul of our community, will have to move over town, including my family, due to ongoing medical needs that we need? Traveling back and forth for labs, x-rays, ultrasounds, et cetera, will get tiring and expensive. It would end up costing way more than a dollar a ticket. So I'm asking our community to please vote yes on April 10th, so that all of us have access to health care 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else coming up? Consent calendar?
We have five items on the regular consent calendar and one item under the housing authority. The first one is actions to approve for the February 20th, 2018 city council meeting. The second item is to receive the report for the mid-year financial result comparison of fiscal year 1718 and to authorize the proposed budget amendments. Number three is to adopt the ordinance 1165-18 of the City of Avalon repealing and reenacting Chapter 4, which is the purchasing system, to Title III Finance of the Avalon Municipal Code. Item four is to adopt Resolution 1806, establishing the City of Avalon's annual growth policy for 2018. Number five is to award the contract to Syria's Cleaning Service for the Public Restroom, Shower, and Maintenance Service Contract, and to authorize the in-house city manager to execute the contract. Number 5A or 5B, however you want to look at it, is to adopt the resolution for the application for grant funds for the California Ocean Protection Council's Proposition 1 Grant Program. And then item six, which is the housing authority, is to authorize the city manager to extend the professional services agreement to RSG in the amount not to exceed $17,540.
Counsel, let your pleasure. I'd like to pull number four.
Like to move staff on 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
And 5A.
And 5A.
And 5A.
As well, yes, thank you for that.
Are there any questions from the community?
Second.
Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Pardon me, Amanda. On item, on number four of the resolution, so Section 3 says, "Increases in population and the number of vehicles issued by the city have resulted in substantial impact on the availability of parking in both commercial and residential areas, traffic, and noise." So projects come forward, like 150 housing units, and what is the, what is the planning commission, how does the planning commission deal with that?
If we have a project command for 150 units.
Let's say. Or, or six units on any other street in town where it's already impacted. You know, I mean, how do, how does the planning commission tackle those big issues?
I think I missed the big issues. As I was walking over here, I apologize, mayor.
No, 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 no. So let's, let's keep it simple, 150 units.
Okay.
If every one of those vehicles, every one of those got a vehicle. Now, you know you're having people that are moving out of a beach house who've never had a vehicle, because they can't get one to that. So it's not just a transfer, now we're talking new, we're talking new vehicles. How do you do that research to say, we can't handle 150, or you can handle, you know?
Okay. I, I, okay, now I understand what the question was, I apologize. Typically, for a project that size, those type of impacts are going to be addressed during the SEQA process. You're going to do traffic studies, you're going to do, you're going to have to look at parking, you're going to have to look at all the impacts of that project, whether it's traffic or anywhere, whatever it is. So that typically happens under the SEQA project. In the example that you gave, where a project may potentially be moving people out of a hotel and into that housing project, and they could potentially say it's not a gain in housing units because you're moving people, I'm not sure that would be clearly seen as a transfer, because you've taken hotel rooms and now you've got full.
But hotel rooms that didn't have vehicles, because you can't have a vehicle attached to a hotel room. So if you take 23, you know, that's 20, even if everybody else was standing, that would be 23 new golf carts, let's say.
Correct. So, so the impact of the new project is, it's going to be judged strictly on the impact of the new project when it comes to vehicles, because unless the planning commission at the direction of the council says, we're going to limit vehicles for this project, if that's a mitigation that the city makes a decision to impose, you know, only one vehicle for every two units, then that's an impact that has to be addressed.
Why doesn't that start at the planning? You are all the experts, so why wouldn't that concept start at the planning commission? Why would we make that recommendation?
No, I'm saying if the city has adopted some kind of vehicle reduction, additional reduction policy.
I know, but if we don't.
Then, yes, it happens at the planning commission level.
And the planning commission.
And that's why you have, the SEQA process requires a public hearing. That's, that's one reason why planning entitlements typically require a public hearing. You go through the process, you do the analysis, you do the studies, the neighborhood gets to provide their input on the, whether or not the impacts are acceptable, or if it's a reasonable trade-off to get the additional housing.
And I would just note that, like a example of the project that the mayor's mentioning, 150 units, that would not be allowed under your, the growth resolution. This growth resolution says, these, here's the list of projects that we are allowing.
Oh, so currently.
And so currently, if you adopt this, that big 120 unit, that's not, that's not allowed, because the condition is, is that, one, the city would have to find that the growth is beneficial to the city and its residents, and Edison would have to confirm in writing that water is available, because that second condition cannot be made. That, that project doesn't even get off the ground right now if you adopt this growth resolution.
And this is an annual thing?
Annual thing, every year. Yes.
Okay. So, and then there was a discussion we've had before about the water, there was the comment that, remember that, that we have something written that if we say there isn't water, remember that little Tera, that in the Edison's Tera, there's something that says that, remember Cindy?
Yep.
That comes before you. So if you all say there isn't enough water.
That the city, I think, under SEQA and impacts of a project, I believe that the city could make the finding that there is not significant water.
And, and there is, if you look at on the, the resolution, the second page of the resolution, item number G is that condition, that regardless of what Edison says about there being water available, if the city determines that there's not water, boom, it's gone. So we've included that adopted policy.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
May I make the motion? To adopt the resolution? No second?
Second.
Comments? Call for the vote. And who's going to be giving the present? Oh, there's Devon.
Devon has been on the ground floor since the very beginning of this process, so she is the queen of this.
Princess, princess.
Good evening. Tonight, you have before you the Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Application, including our evaluation process that staff and BBK developed. This application was originally sent to all of you for your review in early December. It's been revised based on your comments and direction and has been amended. There have been very few changes to the actual application portion. Um, there have been very few changes to the actual application portion of this staff report now. Um, in the discussion with BBK, we decided to add an application appeal procedure that you'll find on page four of the application, so that's new. Um, also, the, um, there's new indemnification language that begins on page 21.
And back to the appeal, is there a fee to, is there a fee for the appeal?
There will be a fee for the appeal, yes ma'am.
All right. Page 21.
Uh, that's where you'll find the new indemnification language. Um, also, there was a notary page that was originally paired with the oath of application. Um, that notary page has been moved up to page 17 to now be paired with the, uh, letter from the landlord granting, uh, use of the property. Um, and that's on page 17, if you want to look at that. Um, also, on page seven of the application, we've added a question, um, and it's to, um, in response to some of the discussions regarding, uh, current cannabis operation in Avalon. And the question is just simply, "Have you ever operated, or do you currently operate a medical or recreational cannabis of any kind in the City of Avalon?" So that way, we can identify if there was a, a person operating previously. Uh, new to you guys, does anyone have any questions about the application procedure so far? The application, um, goes on to page 26, and then there's a quick three-page request, um, called the Medical Cannabis Delivery Operating Plan. Um, if you just flip through that, the new element tonight is the, uh, Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Permit Application and Evaluation Process. Um, that's, uh, four pages that identifies, uh, how the city will receive and, um, determine what applications, um, meet the minimum criteria needed to qualify them to get to our Phase Four, which would be the, when they appear before you all for your review, and then final determination, um, of who receives the permit. Ta-da.
I see your timeline, submittal pro-, uh, timeline, submittal
Yes.
process.
So, um, if all things going well, if, if you all approve this tonight, we would make a plan to open the, um, application, um, to the public on, uh, March 20, excuse me, March 12th. And, uh, we would have an optional briefing meeting where we would, um, provide the opportunity for prospective applicants to come in and, uh, meet with staff in a, a noticed forum, where we would talk through the requirements of the application. And then applications would be to, due to City Hall on April 16th.
And the, just for the, for the public, the application fee is non-refundable?
Uh, the application fee is actually refundable. Um, so what would happen is, um, and it's one of the reasons why we developed the four-phase evaluation structure. Um, per our municipal code, we're allowed to, um, recuperate all expenses associated with the review and evaluation of the applications. So if you, um, were to submit your application, uh, one of the hard and fast rules in our municipal code is that you must pass a background check, and then that's conducted in Phase One. Um, you would submit your application with your application fee for the full process, and then upon our review of your application for completeness and your Phase One background check, if you were eliminated in that phase, you would be reimbursed the expenses that we would, and otherwise have anticipated expending reviewing your application.
So, just the LifeScan in and of itself takes a while?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And so, I don't know if, if that deadline is, is, I know some people are, you know, anxious to get going, but I don't know if that is, is adequate. I don't know if anybody has a comment. I mean, a LifeScan takes, we, again.
Um, oh, I, the research we did was that it could be completed in two to three days.
Two to three days?
Mm-hmm. So our, our first, uh, review of the application would just be for just completeness, make sure you filled out all the boxes, and then we would immediately transfer your information, uh, to the LifeScan Agency.
Please hold, thanks.
But if it makes us all more comfortable, I'm happy to modify the time, timeline in any way.
Well, I don't know if anybody has a comment on the timeline. So, so you get four applicants, $20,000 plus?
Well, the fee is not set yet.
Okay, we're gonna be discussing that again.
The fee will be coming because we have to, there's certain public notices
Right.
to say how we came out by the fees, and so the public can put their input, and then the council would be adopting that
Right.
um, probably April 3rd.
Okay, so you will be giving us a, so let's say, three of them drop out immediately, and they pretty much get their money back. And all we've made is whatever we decide. But, the time that you have spent, the time that law enforcement, um, fire department, public works, they won't just be checking at one time and walking away, there will be more visits, and, and there'll be the financial part of it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, I
In addition to the application fee, there's also a permitting fee. So after you pay your application fee, there's also a fee that we'll be putting together that would, would, would set up what those parameters would look like for the quarterly inspections or whatever.
Okay, great.
Whatever.
And again, it's all gonna be based on the actual cost that the city incurs in processing the applications, doing the inspections.
Exactly.
Et cetera.
Okay. So, do we want to adopt a resolution?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is there a second?
Staff recommendation, is that?
Staff, yes, please, um, yeah, I'd like to adopt the resolution establishing the procedures to govern the Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Application Process, Evaluation, and the manner in which the decision will ultimately be made regarding the issuance of any can, uh, Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Permit.
And, pardon me, is there anybody in the community that'd like to speak on this? Is there a second? All second. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you. Item nine? I mean, eight, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at it.
Okay. This item is before you this evening, um, at the February 6th council meeting, it was brought up to have, come back to you for discussion and provide direction to city staff. And as the staff report, um, outlines that we did contact every hotel in town to see who provided the bicycle service, and there was only one so far, and that was the Villa Portofino, and they had 10 of them. We did place a call again to them today to see if, uh, they provided helmets, they do provide helmets, but it's up to the person to put them on, apparently, and, which I think in adults, I don't know, in California, do we have to wear helmets? I don't know. Anyway, that's not either, either there, they do
I don't think so.
provide the direction of where, of where they cannot go on their bicycles.
They do give them direction.
And I, I don't know if they have anybody here tonight.
Have a map?
Uh, verbal direction. I, I don't know, Richard, if they had on a map, I didn't ask that specific question. I wanted to know about the helmets and
They have ten bikes?
They have ten. Regular bicycles.
So, and, do we know if they are adding it to the hotel room costs, or?
No.
No.
They were not, it was
There's a free
an added amenity.
Just an amenity, okay.
And they store those in their courtyard there.
It just seems to me that we already have a bicycle business in town, why they wouldn't go to them or try to work, uh, some kind of business deal out with them, coupons or whatever it may take for your hotel to rent bikes through their business and take care of that problem?
It just seems a lot, I think, I think you're opening up a can of worms, little by little, with all these bicycles, and once one does it, another one's gonna do it, and it's gonna be more and more congestion. And we really have no, gotta make sure the roads are really
Safe, have your bikes on them anyway, too, also.
And, you know, there's a whole bunch of little worms in this thing. Um, and I don't know if they've even contacted the bike place. I don't know if they need a hotels or anybody else. We, who else?
Who else might want to do it?
We have We have one hotel right now, right? Sort of, you know.
But there's nothing to stop the island company from saying, "Hey, we got three hotels," you know?
I don't know.
Or anybody for that matter.
Yeah, anybody.
Is it, there's, there's, there's a couple bike places here in town, right? I mean, there's
We have one too.
All right, we have two.
And Buddy Wilson, that's him.
And, yeah, I think Buddy's got bikes. So, so, to compound the, um, problem that we're, that we've been speaking of that is starting to occur in town, that there's just becoming more, um, traffic, and maybe we, is, is this what we're trying to get at, is maybe we should, like, put a, um, put some kind of a hold on this type of growth? Because we already do have a couple bike services that provide, they're, they're really good services, and it limits the amount of bikes that we do have, and the confusion, and the theft, and, and keeping tabs on that, and it's pretty safe, provided a good service for many years, so, um, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I kinda, I'm thinking in the same, down the same vein, that maybe we should put a, some kind of a, um, a hold on, on, on this type of growth happening throughout the entire community. Because if every single hotel gets 10 bikes, 20 bikes, there's not gonna be any place to put them. I mean, these bikes go home at night now, and
Additional bike racks?
Yeah, that, that will, that will, yeah, that will definitely be something that's added on to the taxpayer, so, Ms. Bradley's here.
Denise, did you contact, um, the island company, Pavilion Lodge, were they contacted?
Yes.
Because they have come to me to buy 20 bikes, they intend to have
Currently, when we called, they did not have any bicycles.
They did not have any right now, no, they
That's, that's what we wanted to know, how many bikes there were that the hotels have currently.
Right, yeah, okay. Because they are planning to do that. Um, I talked to, um, them today, actually, they came, and that's what they still plan to do, we are talking about a coupon though, so, um
And those bikes jump right on to Crescent?
Yep. What could we, what could we do about that? Can we put a stop to this? Because I, I do believe that, that the bike service provides an excellent service for town, they have plenty of bikes, um, the bikes go home at night, um, they keep good track of them, they tell people where to go, they wear helmets, people have a great time. We don't want to disturb the, the great time people are having now by putting too many, too much traffic on the streets that, that will eventually backfire on us, because then the taxpayers of Avalon will have to pick up the tab for, um, the extra bike racks, and then the sheriffs will have to go out and, and chase down, you know, the bikes could possibly get stolen, which you know they will. Um, I just think we got a good service already. It's, uh, we have several good services in town that provide an assortment of bikes, they've been doing it for a long time, and I don't think we need to infringe on their business and add to a compounding problem that Avalon could have in the future, which is just the streets being way too impacted.
And I, and I understand the goal is to reduce the amount that people drive by increasing their opportunities with the visitors I'm doing, other than a golf cart, and they're gonna do that no matter what, they, they all love golf carts.
No, dummy.
Um, I don't know.
And I think it is good that, I mean, the staff report saying that you would like to encourage biking, I mean, I'm all for that too, but you do need to make sure your streets are in good shape for that, and you have adequate bike racks, and that they're in good condition.
So, Councilmember Sampson asked if, what you could do, so there's, there's two things, one, I know you can do, one, we'd have to do a little research on, one thing you could do is you could amend your, uh, vehicle transportation permit thing to add bicycles to it. Um, right now, it just, uh, covers motorized bicycles, so that if you added bicycles to that, people that wanted to have, uh, these types of businesses would come for the council like they do for, um, you know, extra-large golf carts or amenities and stuff, and get a vehicle permit, uh, for it. Um, that's one thing. The second thing is you could ban bicycles, um, for, for resident, for visitors other than at the shops. I need to look at that to make certain that that's legal. I'm not certain that that's legal, but we could look at that and come back with an answer, and then if that was, then you could just adopt an ordinance saying that, you know, hotels will not be allowed to, uh, have bicycles available for guests.
Well, people can bring their own bikes. Most people who are serious about biking, they bring their own bikes.
Um, and I, and, in the 90s, um, at the bike shop, we had a limited number that we were allowed to have, and it was changed at some point, because we had to make sure we had a city sticker, and we were only allowed to have so many stickers. Then sometime in the late 90s, all of that changed, and so it was an unlimited number that people could have, no matter who you were, a resident or, um, a business. So you might want to consider going back to something like that.
Going back to license.
Where you give out a city sticker, and that's how many, like, it's like the golf carts, you can only have so many.
How many bicycles do you have, electric and electric?
What?
I mean, the, the regular ones and the
Not the electric. Um, and I mean, varies by season, obviously, so, you know, like 120.
Yeah. I mean, are there times when they're all out on the road?
There are Saturdays in July, yes.
Yeah, that they're all out on the road, okay.
So you have just enough, I mean, you, you don't have too many, and
Right.
and you, and you keep those in storage, and you keep them maintained?
Keep them inside at night
I know you keep two full-time mechanics, I mean, pretty much.
What the hotels are gonna find if they, if they're not putting them inside, after a year, they're gonna have to replace them.
Hmm.
Oliver, do you have a comment?
Um, I think it's still advised to bring up the fact that the roads might be unsafe for additional bikes, because we already have bikes on the roads. I would like to see what Scott comes back with, and also I'd like to hear from some of the hotels, what their desires are too. I don't think it's all one-sided, protect, Business Protection Agency here, so, I will defer
So it will be coming back?
Whatever direction council is.
Okay, what do you think?
My thoughts on this is that it's, I'm not in a position to want to make any determination on it tonight. I would like to get some more information, but I will say that I'll take the position that I'm not in favor of additional motorized bikes in town, for sure, but I am in favor of active transportation, um, and I am in favor of all businesses being able to, to do a value add to their business. So, in the case of the Portofino, they felt that something they could do to add value to their guests staying there was provide a bike. I don't, based on this one in a quarter-page staff report, I don't see the, the, enough of the pro and con
Right.
to say that I would be willing to take that away from them to allow a value add to their guests. I, I just don't, I just don't have enough information to make that determination.
No, I think they will find in a couple of years that it probably isn't worth it to them.
I, I think you're right, and that's why I, I don't want to overthink it until we have more information, because, um, we, there was another hotel here in town that tried the bikes, it didn't work. Um, you know, there are some that adamantly say, "Ah, I don't want to deal with that kind of maintenance, I don't have the staff, the knowledge," so I, I
And that was a part of my conversation with Roberto today from the island company, is that they would be thinking about also doing a coupon with me, where they could send their guests over.
Right.
But they still are very interested, though, in having their own bikes. But on busy days, when they run out of their bikes, then they would send people to me.
Oh, okay. Well, this will be coming back to us.
Okay, so we would like to know, I like, what, what is it that we're gonna research here? Because we've got staff, um, um, is it, is it the safety, is it the safety issue, is it the ordinance? Um, so that's what you're gonna find in depth, is what the ordinance says?
As I understand, it'll be, um, potential, uh, survey of some hotels to see how many want to add this, um, legality of, um, what kind of restrictions we can put on, uh, new bicycles.
Okay.
We can look at, no, I guess, some department will have to come up with a, kind of like a congestion study, or, or something like that. Um, I'm not certain about the safety aspect of it, um, insofar as, the wear and tear on the roads is not, not much from bicycles, it's more, it's more congestion.
That's not, yeah, the wear and tear's not a big thing, but let's say a hotel gets 20 bikes, and then they want to put them out in the bike rack out in the street, is that, is that acceptable?
That's an impact, that'd be an impact.
Okay. Okay, so
Well, that's something to write in.
Yeah.
But really, I mean, do you know, that's a fact, you wouldn't be able to do that?
You would not.
No, they couldn't do that on city streets, no.
Why not?
Because that'd be an encroachment. We, unless the city put up, um, bicycle racks on city property, but you just can't leave your property on city property, it becomes the city property, and in fact, right now, we're working with code enforcement, because we've got a plethora of bicycles up at the warehouse
Hundreds.
We're about to ship off, uh, the island.
I've seen them, there's hundreds of them, they're everywhere.
The library fills up every two weeks, and they come and clean them all out, and two weeks later, there's a whole slew more. I mean, I don't know where they all come from.
I don't either.
But, it's like, they pass everything.
Could this hotel that has 10 bikes come back and say, well, we should be grandfathered then?
Because we have 10 bikes?
Probably.
Or can we say, if you, we can make an ordinance six months, if you had them six months prior to this, or you don't get to, you don't get to grandfather them?
That's one thing we'll look at, the amortization and, you know, because...
If he did, they have a three week.
Right.
And is some of this work, work that staff can do or does...
Well, I can do the legal stuff, I don't know about staff resources on the others.
So that will not be at the next meeting, I don't know when.
Annie, you did mention at one point, public bikes, other words, like 10 bikes that are put in a rack in the public area, that people can go and put a, a credit card in or a dollar bill in and you can take the bike for an hour. Remember we saw those in Sacramento, San Jose, Long Beach?
Yeah, the boats in Long Beach.
I think I'm gonna go ahead and speak for both Annie and I, because we looked at the, even, uh, Mayor Garcia from Long Beach wanted to extend the blue bikes that they have right when they get off the boat to, uh, having a facility over here and all be part of the same system. And we, um, both Annie and I at separate times, in our conversations, were not wanting to push for that, because that would take away from the local economy and it would take away from our local businesses. So we've not looked into that.
Okay.
I, I think we have established businesses that already do that.
And it's a space thing and then they also need a mechanic, because those are all electric and they've got credit card machines in them and all of that, you know?
Absolutely, good thinking, okay. Enough direction.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We're going to item nine.
Yep.
Amanda, you're up.
This is the annual report on the status of the housing element and progress in implementation. She has a PowerPoint.
This is, um, a report that we send off to the state every year, but we're supposed to include the public, so this is my first foray into PowerPoint, so let's see if we can... There we go. So this is a annual housing element report. This lets the state know how we are doing in implementing our housing element and how we're doing in building housing. Oh, that's a little small, sorry about that. The housing element is one of seven elements mandated by Government Code 65300 that must be included in our general plan. We completed our general plan in 2013. Housing element's the only element mandated by the state to be updated on a regular basis. We are currently in an eight-year cycle that encompasses 2013 through 2021 and a housing element that has not been updated can affect your ability to get housing, uh, get housing funds. And those are the seven required elements there on the, on the plan. Statutory requirement, governments must provide by April 1st of each year, the annual report for the previous calendar year to the legislative body, which is you, Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, this information. And when we get into the little forms, you'll see it's not super, super complicated information. So the update includes, um, what we, how we have developed housing to meet our assigned RENA obligations. We submit a report, what development has occurred and we, this includes the cumulative production for that housing element cycle. So what is RENA? RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment or Allocation. It's mandated by state housing law as part of the periodic process of updating local housing elements of the general plan. The RENA quantifies the need for housing within each jurisdiction during specified planning periods and we are in the fifth cycle, as I said, which extends between October 2013 to October 2021 and that was adopted by SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Governments. You hear about them a lot on October 2012. This is our RENA allocation. The state looked at our projected growth and said, this is the amount of housing and the income levels that we project that you need to build, your city needs to acquire during this planning cycle. And they break it out by income. So you have very low income households, 20 units, low income households, 12 units, moderate income households, 14, and above moderate income households, 34, for a total of 80. So does this mean that the city has to build 80 housing units? No. However, we are required to adopt statutory changes to our municipal code and implement policies in our general plan that remove government constraints to the development of housing. And I'll go over the programs that are in our general plan here just in a second. Again, that's really small. So what that basically says, that in the, this planning cycle, we have built four housing units. We had a duplex on Olive, a single-family on Olive, and we had a single-family residence divided into a duplex. So that is how much housing we have built in this planning cycle and of course, we all know, because it's a lack of water. They also wanna know if the city has rehabbed any housing, we have preserved any units at risk, which I think is what Annie was asking about. Have we acquired any, or have we acquired any units? We have not done any of those things. We purchased 206 East Whitley in the previous planning cycle and that's why it's not listed here. When they, this report talks about preservation of at-risk units, it's only talking about, um, affordable housing complexes that are under some type of subsidy program and if they are at risk of going away. When we adopted our housing element in 2013, we thought the Tremont Street Apartments, Section 8 contract was, uh, expiring and so that was listed as an at-risk property. HUD has shown on their website that that contract has been extended to 2033. This, um, asks if we've, um, what income categories those housing units fall into. If a housing unit is not, um, under any type of covenant or deed restriction for income categories, it's considered an above moderate unit. And all of ours are not income restricted, those four that were built. Again, very small, I apologize. This breaks it out by year and it shows that out of the 80 units, we have, we still have 76 to go. So this is the status of the programs that, in our housing element. In our housing element, we included 15 programs that we would adopt that would facilitate housing or remove government constraints. So the first one was the housing rehab program. This current, program is currently in abeyance. It was funded, I think, for a couple of years. If a low-income homeowner could come to the city and need to do some rehabilitation on their property, the city could use some of our low-income housing money for that purpose. That program's in abeyance, because of course, we're working on a large housing project with that money. Code enforcement, code enforcement does do other things other than traffic and loose dogs in Avalon, as you know. They also assist the city with nuisance abatements and, um, issues, code issues with housing and that goes towards quality of housing in Avalon. Again, here's the preservation of the at-risk units. First-time homebuyer assistance, the city did fund seven first-time homebuyer purchases between 2013 and 2014. This program is also currently in abeyance while we pursue the multifamily housing project. Housing trust fund, this was actually a housing trust fund that was funded a few years ago with our one and only InLoo, housing InLoo fee that we received. And then I believe for a couple of years, the city was, um, redirecting some of the TOT into this fund and we actually funded two down payment, um, assistance loans for moderate income families. So this fund is not, does not carry the same restrictions as, um, our redevelopment housing money. Temporary summer housing, the city adopted an ordinance for SROs and we've granted entitlements for eight units for that purpose. Affordable housing development, as I've said, the city's currently in negotiations for production of a project of up to 50 units of affordable units. Inclusionary housing program, the city has one project under development that will provide an additional five inclusionary units and the, we are working on an update to our ordinance to reflect the new state statutes. General plan update, we did re-designate 4.87 acres to facilitate workforce housing when we updated the land use element in the general plan.
I'm sorry.
I don't know how to...
Going back to the city's inclusionary with the five units?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that East Whitley?
No, it's, that's Hamilton Cove. Hamilton Cove actually still has an obligation, um, the full build-out of the, full 88 units for the Hamilton Cove project, they have an ultimate obligation of an additional five inclusionary units.
And the five inclusionary units has income guidelines attached to them?
Yes, they will. Adequate sites monitoring, um, this sounds a little scary, but adequate sites monitoring simply is where the city looks to see if there's room in our box for more housing. So we go out and we look at vacant property, we look at property that may be underutilized, that it's got less density on it than what it would ultimately allow. The homeowner is not obligated to build housing on their property, but it just shows that there's room for growth, um, as far as land availability for housing. Density bonus program, we're updating our density bonus code to meet the current statutes. Extremely low income and special needs housing. The city amended the zoning ordinance to allow for SROs, emergency shelters and residential care facilities. This is one of those government constraints that they talk about, where the city's not necessarily building this housing, but we make our zoning open, we open the door for that housing, if, if it's needed and if someone wants to build it, it is possible for it to be built in Avalon. We clarified our parking requirements, we changed our parking in the flats to allow for autowets instead of full-size parking. We do have available fair housing information in the lobby. Reasonable accommodation, the Public Works Department is busy working on a program to, um, improve the accessibility of our sidewalks and curbs in those areas where that needs to be done. What's next? How do we meet our RENA allocation? So once fresh water becomes available, the 30 above moderate units could be met through additional units in the Hamilton Cove development, additional infield second units and potentially some portion of the proposed employee housing by the island company. The very low, low and moderate income unit allocation, which is 35 units, could be met by units generated in the city housing project and/or the inclusionary obligation of any new housing project of more than five units. I think that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Comments from the community?
Okay. So I need you, I need a motion.
You received the report, direct staff to submit report?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
No comments?
All eyes.
Okay, item 10.
Yeah.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works again. Okay, this item seeks further direction from council on the 206 East Whitley property that we discussed, uh, last meeting. So at the February 20th city council meeting, council acting as the housing authority requested staff to come back with cost estimates for the potential renovation of the 206 East Whitley property. Uh, the first step in the review was to review the current status of the property. So the property contains five units on it right now, two, two-bedroom units, two one-bedroom units and a studio, which is an older, um, building. There's currently, uh, one tenant, which has resided at the property since the property was purchased, um, in 2008 and the tenant, uh, rents one of the one-bedroom units on a month-to-month term for 212, $150 a month. Uh, the second step was to review the physical condition of the property. Um, there was a, a real estate inspection report when we purchased, uh, the property and it went through the deficiencies of the property and, uh, step-by-step, like you would look, uh, it's approximately, you know, the 20, 25 pages and looked at the plumbing, the electrical, the outside structure, any of those deficiencies and the city has, over time, repaired some of those things, but, uh, I can't say that we've corrected all those deficiencies that occurred 10 years ago. So those are still on task list to get done. Um, we also additionally, we did a survey of the property. So we have mapping of the property and, uh, monuments replaced in the corner, so we know what is our property out there. Um, so since the time we've purchased the property, there've been minor cosmetic improvements such as floor coverings, paint in some of the units and, you know, minimal maintenance type activities, uh, as, as were needed. The, um, main item that was done was that the sewer was temporarily rerouted, because the, uh, some of the sewer main within, in the building is getting old and as we put it, tuberculated, so it has reduced capacity. So they, uh, diverted that down around the backside of the building and into another street. So, um, I did a review of the unoccupied units, there's one, and of course, there's still one occupied unit and I didn't go into that one yet. And it looks like, um, all of the kitchens and bathroom facilities are in a very tired condition. Uh, they need some rehabilitation to make them what I would think that a city would provide to its residents. The doors and window and generally the finish elements are in need of heavy maintenance and some of those windows, uh, like the big plate glass windows, um, that are out, that have the view, they're not even a tempered glass. Uh, so they're, that's a safety issue and then there's some louvered windows in the back and those are in disrepair too and then also those are not tempered glass, so, and they're too low to the ground, so somebody could fall through those windows and there would be no protection. Um, additionally, uh, there's some safety concerns with the deck, they have carpet on the deck, so even this report back 10 years ago couldn't review the condition of that. As I look underneath that, you know, those are wood decks, um, and they're laminated decks like plywood and there's dry rot that's occurring within the stair stringers and, and the stairs. So those need some, um, some, definitely some love. And then, so all the heating and water systems need to be further evaluated. When the property was purchased, some of those water heaters were about a year old. It looks like, um, the heating in there is wall furnaces, some of those are not the same age, when I looked at some of the units versus the other. It's not a major expense, but, uh, good source of heat in a house, since that's the only source of heat in those houses, is that those should be evaluated and for safety, all the way from going through the flu and into, uh, the fire, the, the chamber down below. So, um, and then it looked like the, also the laundry room was in disrepair and some of the appliances there, all the appliances need to be evaluated where they were. It looked like they're also very tired. So at a minimum, the safety issues need to be addressed, uh, which includes stripping the decks of the carpet, repairing the dry rot, replacing the windows that are failing, cleaning up and perform major maintenance on the electrical and plumbing and carpentry finish and new paint and clean up the floor covering. And so many of the appliances need replacement. And I looked at the studio unit and it is in such a condition of disrepair and cleaning this, that it's probably not likely worth our effort to go in there and try to rehabilitate that. Um, I would think at some point, uh, depending on what we get for advice on that, whether that takes a unit out of the low mod for a while, that we would just wanna demolish that at the earliest possible time and get that liability off our books, but it really depends on how that plays out. So...
Does the public have access to that?
Excuse?
Can the public get into that building, to that shack?
Uh, right now, it's got padlocks at the outside, so you're...
Oh, so...
So if somebody needs to see it, I can, I have the key.
No, but nobody can, it's not, it's not housing for the...
No, it's not where somebody can go in there and squat in there.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So, um, that was the second step. So the third step was to provide an estimate, uh, and that's really what I'm here to get direction on, because we can go a lot of different ways on this. So, and we want to in April, come with that estimate so that we can keep moving this and that's why with the check-in tonight was just what you want me to look at as far as options. Okay, so option A, as we call it, goal, provide for safety repairs, this will be the goal of option A, provide for safety repairs and minimal cosmetic improvements and get the four units rented and do not occupy this, the studio unit, okay? So this would be just the minimal improvements, kinda getting it cleaned up and get them rented. And the likely results, the unit would be able to be rented quickly and there will be, uh, but there will be the need for continuous repairs on the age system, uh, until we get... be, but there will be the need for continuous repairs on the age system until we get, you know, whatever is the final that we want to do with these things. So option B, the goal would be to complete the safety repairs and do a moderate remodel to all units. This will include new kitchen facilities, new bath facilities, this is not high-end ones, this is enough to get them to be a clean facility that could, somebody could live in, in a period of time that we would pick. And including, oh see, I already talked about new baths, so evaluate and replace the water heater and heating units as necessary, that could be probably half of those need to be replaced. Repair electrical and plumbing as needed, that's not gutting out everything in the walls, but at least getting it where it would be functioning. New paint, new floor coverings, new electrical fixtures, finished hardware. So it's a little more robust remodel, it's not the higher-end stuff that we'd be putting in there. It's really, I would think, something as we kind of transition into where I go in to talk about option C here, but maybe it'd be a period of time where you say, that's a good three-year investment, that we wouldn't have heavy maintenance, we would have minimal maintenance to do on that property. They'd be nice, clean, you know, good habitable units. Okay? So the likely results on that, the unit should be ready to rent in about four months, plus or minus, if we got real aggressive with this. And so that would be like August 2018 here, you know, by the time that we talk in April, and we add four months on that. And likely be free of major maintenance activities for at least three years. Okay? So then as far as property management piece on that, we would think that we'd want to be putting that, those type of dollars in, you know, so you've got to pick that number of how we want to, if that's a year, it's maybe something less that we put in to that. Okay? Option C, so this is kind of going for it all, the goal would be developing an additional five units, that's what, in talking with the planning director, that that's what would be allowed on that property for our zoning. So we have five units, what we would actually do is demo that studio, and then so we'd put six new units, five of those being new and one is that replacement for that studio, have 10 units altogether, okay? And so what we would do is go in there, do, we could do an A, or option A or option B to start that, get those things rented out, and be at that level where it's either something that's kind of a minimal investment, or it could be that three, four-year investment where we go with option B. And at the same time, we'd start looking at what are next steps to develop those plans to do the six units. Get those six units built, and then move those tenants that we have in those four units into those new six units, acquire another couple tenants, and then we'd be doing a major remodel of that back building. Okay? And the reason that would make it all consistent, all new, because the back building, it doesn't have Title 24 for energy, the windows are not in good shape, you know, it's like all of the, it's an old tired building. If we want something that's pretty much maintenance-free and consistent across the whole thing, you would need to put that investment in there. So I can get those estimates together if that's A, B, or C. So sewer, let's talk about sewer. Okay, so we said with any option, we've got that sewer that was rerouted. So staff went out and looked at the ability to move that sewer and bring it right down to East Whitley, very feasible. And so I think that that could be even something that we start working on right away as we're working through getting this estimate for April to you, is if you want to get going on seeking proposals to put that sewer from down the side of the building there, down to East Whitley, we can get that done. And I'm thinking that a good number to pick with that, you know, just a rough starting budget, 25 grand, I think will be well under that, but that would be good if we wanted to get some of that authorized to get that started. Okay?
Why are we here in 150 a while back?
To get it started.
No way, no way.
That was the number that was floating around, 150,000.
No, it's a very short run, we pop the manhole lids, we've got sewer right out there, we've got a little bit, depending on where we actually land the Y into that sewer there, you know, it's, we have the ability, it's in pavers within East Whitley, you know, there's a little bit of concrete we'll be tearing up and some shrubs and stuff on the property itself, but it seems very doable to be able to get it done.
That's good news.
Okay? So yeah, it's really good news, and then that sets us up for the other building too, if we choose to have the other building, because we would size everything so that it could accept that, okay? If you choose to go with that in the future. Okay? But it needs, it needs to be done at some point, just even for the building that's out there. So, so I'm seeking, you were seeking direction to focus the initial estimates, we can go any way you want, but, so we can maybe bracket some ranges you're looking at. If it's option A, that's pretty simple, straightforward, you say, that's really a performance issue, get this thing rented out, get it where, you know, it, you know, some of the major safety problems are done, you know, like the rot, you know, that, make sure that the plumbing fixtures all work, make sure if you go in the cabinets in the kitchen that the doors all kind of close, make sure that, you know, the doors that are with other doors, the pocket doors, those kind of things work. So you'd just be working on kind of a heavy maintenance aspect of that.
But that wouldn't be changing those windows out?
It would at least be putting some type of safety guard rail if we didn't change those out right now, especially those plate glass windows, so somebody couldn't fall through them. So at some point, you would be putting some piece of wood or something, this, that...
The big ones?
The big ones.
They're huge.
They're huge.
They're amazing, yeah.
And actually, the wind is, actually blows them when we have higher wind, you know, they're still there, but yeah, it's not something that we should leave there for long.
Well, even under, under concept A, could you throw the windows into concept A?
Yes, yes, we can do any of those things. So you could say, hey, we want bracket this, these are the performance measures we want of this, give us what that costs. We also could work the other way, what do I get for, if I put $100,000 into four units, you know, what do I get for that price? And so I can look at those. I guess it really gets down to option C, are we looking to do something bigger, or is that just a further discussion and you just want us to look at option A and B right now?
I'm not so concerned with option C because there is no water.
Yes.
So, and you have to have a plan before you can get put on the water list?
We should be, well, we could say we have six units, because we, you know, we'd be ready to do that right now, and that's actually an item that we should be doing, is we should get on the water allocation list right now.
Well, I think you have to have a plan to do that, so if you've already got a plan for those six units, then we can get on the list.
It's the same situation as we did for Tremont with CNC. And so we were, we're close enough, we have a plan close enough, we just say, this is the box, this is the landscaping we're going to have. Essentially, we have, we have that information, we're ready to go with that. I mean, we could get that within the next, you know, within the next week.
Like A or B?
Well, I think if we can get on C's list, we might as well.
C?
Because that's for the growth. But I think A and B, like the A, which is all the cosmetics, take care of the windows and all of that, and maybe replace the windows, not just put guards up, this is me, are there washer and dryers at that facility?
Yes, there's washer and dryers, coin washer and dryers down below. And yeah, we need to make that, that whole room better.
The basement?
The basement, yeah, not the basement where there's a low ceiling, but there is a...
There's a washroom?
It's real functional, has a washer dryer, kind of a little shop area laundry room, but just needs some love, you know?
Yeah.
Get some good appliances in there, make sure those work really good, there's enough for all the tenants, you know, there's some folding tables, sanitize the whole thing.
People would really appreciate that.
Yeah, and then, yeah, they feel like they, you know, they're getting something good for it.
So then, okay, so you get those numbers, even if it's A or B, you get those numbers, and you feed those numbers to RGS, because they're going to say, well, either we say, we want to spend $200,000 on this and the money's just gone, because I don't know how much we're concerned about recouping money, we, our goal is to just give them affordable rents, correct?
Well, it's also to make the places functional to a point to where we don't have to go in there every two weeks and fix stuff.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, that's why I was kind of go with that option B, is like, it's a little more major maintenance, it takes care of all the safety issues, that it's clean, it's newer, somebody really happy to get in one of those.
Because once you get in there, you don't want to be going in and disrupting people's, I mean, it's just harder to do work with people in there.
Yeah, and if you're in, if you're in the price point of, you know, of $100,000, I mean, you easily, it could be even 140, you probably, your rents will cover that over two years, would the payoff would be there, you'd see...
But it's not about making money.
No, no, it's not, I'm just, it's always, we should be talking that.
I mean, to me, if you say you could do all that stuff for 140 or 200,000, and we've got four units.
And remember, it's not going to be high-end, but it's going to be very clean, and, you know, something that's new, and, because by the time I go in there and I start messing with cabinets and trying to get doors back and drawers, and just take them out and get new boxes in there that are, you know, middle grade, and new counters and new appliances, you know?
I like that.
We want to go with option B then?
B or C at least, yeah.
B and then C at a later date with the plans for the, for the six additional units?
Oh yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, B, yes, yes, to B for sure, because...
And I misunderstood, or I heard two different things. First, I thought you said four months for option B, but then I thought you said four years.
No, no, that would be like the, we're picking some times, so if we're making this investment, you're going, oh, this will be good for three, it gives you that, well, actually, I think the end date that we had to have them rented was 2020, or the report 2022, something like that. But I was just picking a date so that we could say, if we did nothing with the six units, and we're still trying to figure out, we had other things happen, because we've had some discussions with LA County with the housing, and it seems like there's some other dollars available, so it's moving all those pieces. If that takes us some time, this gets that goal that you wanted to see them get rented outdone in four months. And then that it would be where it'd be low maintenance, three to four years, where we wouldn't be constantly, hey, the sinks, the toilets back, you know, or whatever, the, yeah. So it would be minor maintenance for us, okay?
That's exciting.
And that's option B.
That's option B.
Okay. Does the community have any comments?
And can we, can we simultaneously move forward with the sewer?
Yes.
Yeah. And then you're, you're also going to do what you need to do to get us on the water allocation list?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so my next question is for Denise and Scott. I got to ask this, what about the, I mean, these places are going to be rented, how's the application going to, going to work, and how do people go about getting on a list? And we might as well be transparent about this, how that would, might pan out, so...
That's what part of that contract that you approved already with RSG?
Oh, they're going to go ahead and develop that whole process.
They're going to talk about what the cost would be for a family of one, two, three, and four, and all of that.
There's some kind of list, I mean, how's that selected?
Yes.
And then, well, they'll, and a priority to residents, and...
They're going to come forward with a recommendation on a process where you would be creating a list of people that go there, and you can do various things for that, they'll provide those to the council. Ultimately, the council will make a decision as to how to decide, what processes to decide who gets there.
Okay, what about the, I want to call it the cottage, the one off to the side.
Yeah, studio, I'd call it the studio, yeah, the cottage.
Yeah, the cottage.
And so that, we need to get clarification, you know, when that unit goes away, one of our low-mod units go away, so...
I don't know if it should go away, but I mean, if, yeah, if we remodel, but what's the chance of getting that online too? I know it's pretty trash.
Get a little tiny house.
It's a cute little thing though, I mean, but it's done, isn't it?
I think it's, I'm, I can take you for a tour of it, I really don't think that it's worth putting the dollars into that.
We may have hazmat feet.
With the four-plex, it's got a great structure to it, that's in good shape, you know, it's just old, and we can do something with it. The other one, we know we're going to slick off the property, it's done. So we might as well get that liability off our books as soon as we can, that it works.
Fire department could drill on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Great, great job.
That's good news.
It's great news.
Thank you for being here, Bob. Okay, I think now we, if there's no other items, we're going into closed session?
Yes, we have three closed session items. The first is liability claims, associated Pacific Constructors. Second is conference with legal counsel, two cases, one is to discuss potential litigation regarding Amanda Cook, and the other is to discuss ADA complaint that we have regarding infrastructure on Creston Avenue and Mall.
Well, Tony, good night, and...
Thank you for coming, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
We're back from closed session.
And the council unanimously denied the liability claim of Associated Pacific Constructors, Inc., and unanimously directed City Attorney to enter into a tolling agreement on the ADA issues.
No other report of motion.
Okay. Means adjourned.